Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll call the order of the Village of Oregon. Village of Oregon Board Meeting of Monday, August 7th, 2023. Item two, roll call, please.
Beshin?
Here.
Belo?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Campen?
Here.
And Kirchdorfer and Manki are absent this evening.
Thank you. Item three, excuse me, approval of village board meeting minutes if correct and correction and correction of mistakes if any. Recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Derek and Amanda. Questions, comments? Although in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. That's for both minutes, by the way. Item four, public appearances, comments, communications. A, oath of office and swearing in of Officer Joe Krantz.
So, yes, thank you for giving me this time here to swear in one of our newest additions to the department. Before I swear in, Joe, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about him. And then after that, I'm gonna have him come up to the front and talk a little bit about the academy experience. Is that better?
Yeah.
Because, you know, now more often than not, we are sending people through the academy. And Joe has proven to be an excellent investment that this village could put in someone coming into this profession. So, a little bit about Joe. Joe Krantz was born in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Some of the other areas he spent his childhood in and then grew up in were East Troy, Pewaki, and Waukesha. He attended high school at Brookfield Academy and graduated in 2019. He then moved on to St. Norberg College and then ultimately transferred with you to the UW Madison College, where he did graduate. So, congratulations to him. He got a bachelor's degree in political science. What was really impressive about Joe is when he was applying with our agency and going through the process, at one point I did ask him, you still have to finish your degree. And we're gonna start you in the academy as soon as possible. Can you do both? And without hesitation, he said absolutely. And he did. He did quite well. To add, Joe enjoys outdoors and playing sports. His past employment included working for the Wisconsin State Assembly. In late March of 2023, we hired him. We did a very informal swearing in at the time. And then he right away went off to the Dane County Sheriff's Office Academy, Police Recruit Academy. This is the first time we have ever put an Oregon officer through the Dane County Academy. Normally, they go through Madison College or Blackhawk Tech. Probably three months prior to sending Joe to this academy, Sheriff Barrett, who I work with regularly, invited me to be a guest speaker at another graduation. Well, we didn't have anybody graduating, but he wanted me to come speak at it. That is when I got to see exactly who is instructing with the sheriff's office. And these were people that I have worked through my career with, and they're excellent instructors. So, I think it's a great opportunity for our officers to go through that academy with that caliber of instructors. So, as I attended his graduation ceremony for the recruit academy, there's only a handful of awards that they give out. There's sixteen cadets in the class. Joe and one other individual were the only ones from outside agencies, other than the sheriff's office. And six awards were given out for various things, whether it's emergency vehicle operation, firearms, and it's just certain skills that if students, cadets excel in, they get awards. And I was very pleased to hear that Joe received one of those awards. And by one of the instructors that I respect the most out of that academy, and that's Deputy Heidi Stunica. I always say her name wrong. So, she actually was willing to share with me a copy of her speech. I just wanted to share a few words that she read off for her speech when presenting this award to Joe. The award was for physical readiness and wellness. Normally, when people hear that, they think, oh, you know, Joe must be really great at sit-ups and push-ups. It's just so much more than that. It's about just overall, you know, overall having a positive attitude and taking good care of yourself in this profession. She writes, fitness is a component of this class. They do it twice a week in one-hour blocks, generally at the end of the day. The requirements for receiving this award is to participate, to do journal assignments, pass the physical readiness test, show effort, and have a great attitude. What she shared specifically about Joe that was great to hear was because throughout the entirety of the academy, she did not hear one negative word come out of his mouth. Joe made huge improvements in his push-up form. And even though he didn't beat another cadet in the push-up challenge, he improved his overall stats remarkably. Joe showed up on time and ready to work every day. He participated, helped, encouraged others, even on final testing day, pushing his classmates to finish the one and a half mile on time. His attitude was excellent, and he pushed himself to see what he could achieve. His personality is one of humble followership and informal leadership that we should all strive for. Excellent achievement there. So, at this time, Joe, would you mind coming up and just talking briefly about your academy experience?
Of course.
Please.
Good evening. So, my name is Officer Joe Krantz. First of all, thank you, Chief, for those kind words. I really appreciate it. And I'm very excited to foster relationships with the department and work towards public safety here in Oregon. Also, thank you to the village board. I'm very happy to be here, and thank you for approving me for this position. While I didn't grow up in Oregon, I did grow up in East Troy, as Chief mentioned, which is a very small town. And I recently moved just up the road here to Alpine Parkway, so I'm already loving it and happy to call this place home. And thank you again to Chief and Rudy and the department for their support. As Chief mentioned, I was going through UW Madison and the academy at the same time. And I found that they were very flexible throughout the hiring process and really accommodated and were there for me throughout that sort of very hectic and busy time. As far as my experience in the academy, as you know, it's an eighteen-week program. Cadets have to show proficiency in a wide, wide variety of different areas, from vehicle contacts to firearms, to defense and arrest tactics, constitutional law, report writing, professional communications, physical fitness, crime scene analysis, and so many different areas. And while those are all extremely important to perform your role as an effective police officer, my takeaway from the academy and what struck me the most throughout the academy and reflecting upon it is the importance of communication and emotional intelligence. If you are unable to successfully communicate with people and to develop empathy and to relate to individuals as human beings and foster respect with every encounter that you have, you will not be an effective officer. And I believe that my life experience and my prior work experience has helped train me to be ready to get out on the road and successfully be able to relate to other individuals and human beings. And I look forward to only improving upon that. And as I've, in the week of admin training that I've had so far with Officer Ted Gilbertson, the thing that he has stressed to me the most is the importance of considering justification and desirability with everything we do in law enforcement. Is this traffic stop justified? And how desirable is the action that I'm taking? And that's where it's obviously convenient that we have discretion in these matters. But that has really stuck with me, because, you know, a lot of people have a perception of law enforcement that we are simply the crime stoppers, and we're out there to go get them, which is true. And I look forward to advancing public safety and keeping the citizens of Oregon safe. But at the same time, we have to keep a level-headedness about us and consider that justification and desirability with every encounter that we have. So, throughout all of the courses in the academy, I have considered communication and probably constitutional law to be the most important factors to consider and the biggest takeaways that I had. So, I'm very excited to be here. I really thank you again for the opportunity. If you have any questions, I would love to meet with you sometime and talk. If you have any other questions about the academy, but I just briefly wanted to share my experience and what I thought was the most important takeaway. So, thank you again, Chief, for your kind words, and thank you all for your support and the opportunity you've given me.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you want to just pick up that mic?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, thank you.
So, Joe, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph A. Krantz, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
I, Joseph A. Krantz, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin, the charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin, the charter, laws and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of March 23rd, 2023.
I will assume my duties as of March 23rd, 2023.
Thank you, Chief. Item four, excuse me, item four B, application for Class B fermented malt beverage and a Class C wine license, restaurant only, submitted by Bodie Howe Brew Pub LLC, doing business as Bodie Howe Brewing Company located at 201 Concord Drive, Agent listed McCann J. Schroeder. Item one, open to public hearing. And are there any staff comments? Seems pretty straightforward.
There's no staff comments, just what's in the, outlined in the memo. This would be conditioned upon approval of final inspections by the Oregon Police Department, the Fire District, and the Building Inspector. And I also just want to thank Joey Hanson, our deputy clerk, for working with the applicants to get this completed.
Thank you. Item three is public comments on the application. Public comments? Seeing none. Item four, close the public hearing. Item five, board discussion, potential action. As Candy mentioned, the recommended motion to approve is presented condition upon final approval from the Oregon Police Department, Oregon Fire District, and the Building Inspector. Amanda.
Oh, I was just gonna offer to make the motion.
Great. Amanda, Carleen, discussion.
I have questions. Because it's conditional on those things, when those things happen, doesn't, they don't have to come back again. Is that correct?
No.
Good.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you.
And then we'll be in touch, Jamie. And, yeah, and Mac, yep.
Item four C, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open meeting laws, this agenda items allow board members to receive information and to ask questions of their presenter, facilitate a better understanding of the information. Fifteen minutes will be provided this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Public comments? Anyone for public comments? Anybody? Yes, sir. If you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Jamie Gish.
Okay.
I live at 285 South Bar Oak Avenue.
Okay.
I'm here to talk about your ordinance, mowing ordinance for the greenways. I got a call from the village about myself mowing the greenway, which I have been doing for forty-five years. I got a, I asked him if he told anybody else about the mowing the greenway behind my house. And he says no, that I was the first one that he called, and this is last week. And we talked a little bit, and then he said, oh, yeah, I did talk to a few other people. So, he kind of contradicted himself. At the end of the conversation, he threatened me with turning me over to the village attorney because I broke the ordinance that Oregon has with mowing the greenway. It was a threat. It wasn't just a conversation. It was a threat. And he told me he had the backing of the village administrator, the village board, that he could do it. And that was his policy, and he was gonna enforce it. He hasn't, but he threatened me with it. I don't appreciate that one bit. I mean, he could have talked, and we could have went through this. He doesn't even follow through on his own policy. And today, I was a little upset because he mowed the, you guys call it a park. Battle Park was never intended to be a park. That's a retaining basin. Everybody knows it. It's been here for many years. We have retaining basins all over the village. And most of them are called parks nowadays, and I, I love them. That part, that drainage basin across from me gets used every day. Today, I think there was thirty-some kids over there. And I like it. They call the front the park, but they were over there mowing it today. And part of my greenway that goes behind my house also goes through that drainage ditch, retaining basin. It was a retaining basin. And most of these parks are retaining basins that we call parks nowadays. And I, I love it. You should do that. But you've got to maintain them too, not only that, but the drainage. Now, you're growing weeds in our drainage ditches, which he tried, which the village did several years ago. It cost the village a lot of money a couple of years ago when they didn't mow. All that, when we had storms, it came down and flooded through here. If anybody's been over here, I don't know how long you've been here. But it goes down here and it makes a big U around here. And it got plugged. Most of the culverts, inlets and outlets, got plugged. It plugged underneath the, by QuickTrip.
About thirty seconds.
The village spent a lot of money down there.
Excuse me, about thirty seconds, sir.
Well, anyway, we spend a lot of money on keeping this going. And now you've got weeds growing. It's slowing down the drain, drainage, and it's not draining in the way it should be. I wouldn't mind seeing it just go back to maybe once, once a month or something to keep the weeds down. I talked to my neighbor, and the big thing now is safety. I don't think anybody brought up safety in this little meeting we had. We got a neighbor girl. She got bit by ticks. She had ticks. She went in the house, and her parents picked off ticks. You know, it's diseases that's created by some of, and it was in backyard. I would say it's greenway backyard, which is ridiculous.
I'm gonna have to end it there, sir.
Well, I got a lot to say, but I don't appreciate being threatened by an ordinance that you do not have. I spent probably an hour down here trying to find the ordinance. Nobody downstairs could find the ordinance. There's no ordinance. How can anybody threaten me with an ordinance over to the attorney? And there's no ordinance at all. And this is gonna be reviewed again in October, they told me.
Right.
So, I'm just saying, if you're saying there's an ordinance, there should be an ordinance. I should be able to see it. There isn't.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comments? Moving on. Thank you. Item five, approve of vouchers in the amount of $577,327.50. Amanda and Derek, discussion, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
And Belo?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, A through F. Recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Certainly can ask any or all questions about any of these items. Amanda.
I'll move approval, and I have one question.
Okay. Derek, second. Okay, Amanda.
In like just thirty seconds, can you refresh my memory about the Greenview Preserve Agreement? Just where it's located. I'm having a hard time remembering.
Veridian.
It's the Veridian.
It's over by the cemetery.
Okay, never mind. Good, thanks.
Okay, Derek?
Just making sure. So, this tingles graphic design for public art website that is all coming out of the public art funds, correct? And this is just kind of, it's not a contract per se. It's just making sure that they have control over their artwork. Is that kind of just what I'm getting here?
Yes, that's correct.
Further comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, reported committees, item for discussion and possible action. A, public safety, one, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh-seven, an ordinance creating section 7.02, sub-four, sub-A, sub-26 of the Village Code of Ordinances, establishing prohibited parking at both sides of Oak Street from its intersection with Brook Street to 140 feet south of its intersection with Nygaard Street. I know that Jeff has talked, this has been through public safety, and I believe Jeff had mentioned this. Were there questions?
No, I was just gonna make one comment.
Please.
Do we need to move or anything before I comment?
We'll call that a motion from Carleen.
All right, that's a motion.
And a second from Amanda.
I just wanted to comment that one of the things that we talked about in the meeting was, like, when there are tournaments and such as that, that the possibility of just temporarily putting cones on one side, so there could be parking on one side if there was overflow in the parking lots. And it would be strictly temporary. It was like, if we need it, kind of as we go, see if that's something. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's noted.
Go ahead, Amanda.
And also that Jeff indicated in the public safety meeting that the expansion of the parking lots in JC Park actually results in a net gain of ninety-three. Ninety-three parking spots. So, he was pretty comfortable with making this change, and it still increases the parking over there.
Exactly, yeah. And we just, in discussion, talked about there are sometimes tournaments and things where there are lots of people. And if that were to be the case, then we could do something that's just temporary for that, you know, two, three-day event.
Well, I, I'm wondering if you're suggesting that Public Works, if you want to make that part of your motion. And if so, I think we're.
No, I don't think we, no, I'm not suggesting we change anything. I'm just stating because that meeting is much less watched than this one, that in the cases of things like tournaments, when there's lots and lots of pressure for parking, if those ninety, additional ninety-three spots are used up, we may look at doing something temporarily just for that. And it's just a.
And that would be subject to the Director of Public Works discretion?
And probably the police chief as well, I would think.
Fair enough.
I think in those circumstances, those types of special events, we would know in advance that those are going to be occurring.
Exactly.
And if we need, if we're anticipating some sort of issue, we would bring it to the village board to be addressed.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make it clear, again, for the people watching, may think that their event justifies cones, and it may not. So, I just wanted to say there is, there's an authority that.
Right, I'm not gonna go out there and put cones.
Okay.
That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying that we, in public safety, we talked about there may be circumstances where that would be necessary and just for flexibility, that Public Works and Public, and Public Safety would work together on something like that. And it would be strictly temporary.
Okay, other comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Item seven, A2, resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-eight, directing the street superintendent to obtain, erect, and maintain traffic signs, establishing a four-way stop control intersection at the intersection of Park Street and Perry Parkway pursuant to section 7.05 of the Village Code of Ordinances. Recommended motion to approve as presented. Derek and Lynn, comments, questions? Again, I think it's been through public safety. Lynn, please.
I just want to make a comment to say I really appreciate this. I've talked to a couple of people in the last couple of days since having this and unanimous excitement and desire to get this to be a much safer, more manageable intersection, especially before school starts and you've got more people coming in and out of there.
Thank you. Derek?
Question, when this is approved, when are the signs going up?
I couldn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry. When this is approved, when are the signs going up?
That's an excellent question and one that I would probably send to Jeff. I would assume that this could be done very quickly. We, we talk to the sign folks all the time, and this would probably come up within the next week or so, would be my estimate.
Thank you.
Okay, further comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion, possible action. A, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh-eight, an ordinance amending section 115 of the 1.15 of the Village Code of Ordinances, extending the duration of the Ad Hoc Public Transportation Committee. Recommended motion to approve. I know that we talked about this at the planning, and the decision was made. Did you have, anyone, somebody else have something to add? I think we're all on board with this. Amanda, please.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
And currently, for the discussion, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you. Eight B, village president nominations of Amanda Peterson, Village trustee Cynthia D. Camilli, Alyssa Rosner, and Tim Higgins to the Ad Hoc Public Transportation Committee. So, basically, I've made the nominations. The village board gets to confirm these, so we're looking for a motion to confirm. Amanda and Carleen.
And just to clarify, these are all the people who are currently on the committee, and since it was renewed, they're just gonna continue, so.
Can I just add that there are three open seats on that com- Can I just add that there are three open seats on that committee? And anybody who's interested in transportation should let Amanda and Phil know.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Items, eight C, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh nine, an ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance repealing or replacing section one point one-four of the Village Code of Ordinances related to the establishment of a sustainable, sustainability committee. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented, again, I think we've just, we discussed this at strategic planning, so basically, we're just, uh, codifying that, so we're looking for.
Can I just say one thing?
We'll call that a motion.
Yeah, we'll call it a motion, and I, I, I agree, I'm moving that, and also just wanna comment that this is not ad hoc anymore, this is permanent.
Thanks, that's a good.
Just so folks know that.
Good clarification, okay, we have a motion, Amanda, second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Eight D, continuing review of the proposed twenty-twenty-four through twenty-three-three capital improvement plan.
We are moving along here, all right. Um, so we've been looking at the capital improvement plan for the last four meetings, and I think we're starting to get to a place where it's pretty firmed up. There was a couple changes in your packet this time around, uh, we moved some of the utility, uh, southeast expansion projects back up a, a couple years, they got pushed out, uh, to the later part of the decade. But knowing, uh, the conversations that we had at the previous meeting, plus the strategic planning meeting, that that was a, a board priority, so we moved those back up. And then there were also a couple, uh, uh, smaller changes to the Police Department in the year twenty-twenty-six. Uh, just some minor changes to some of their equipment and vehicle costs that they identified. Uh, so at the next meeting, um, Dave Ferris will be here from Ellers, and he'll go over the annual update to the Village's financial management plan, uh, which will cover the analysis that we've given in the packet and at the last few meetings, um, in terms of the debt limit calculation, the impact on village property taxes, um, and then also looking at just the projections for the operating budget, uh, tax incremental districts, and, um, we'll also see the impact on the utilities as far as the proposed capital improvement plan, and, uh, any rates or changes that we might need to make in order to keep, uh, in order to fund the projects that are within the C I P. So we're sort of getting towards the end of this, once, uh, once we get past next meeting on the twenty-first, we'll start to move into the, the operating side of things. So if there's any, uh, feedback or changes or things that the board wants to make on the ten-year plans, starting to be the end of the road here to, to make those changes. I guess as we get closer here to the end of this review period, I just wanna make sure, and the board should make sure that the priorities for twenty-twenty-four are reflected in the C I P, because what will happen is, we'll take what's listed here, and we'll put it actually into the operating budget that you'll start to review in September and October, um, so make sure that you're looking at that. You know, in terms of what that looks like, um, you know, we're looking at some equipment in the Clerks Department, downtown master plan, which we've talked about, uh, funding the fire district equipment proposal, ongoing computer replacements. We moved up the J C Park Phase Two project, that was kind of out in limbo a little bit, but we heard feedback from the board to make that next year. Some additional parks projects identified in the parks plan, um, ongoing police, uh, equipment and vehicle replacements. The big, uh, street proj, street and utility project next year will be South Main Street. The, uh, storm water management, water quality study, which we talked about as part of the strategic plan, is in there. Ongoing equipment replacement in the Public Works Department. Um, and then when we get into the utility projects, uh, we see a lot of costs for supporting, uh, like the South Main Street project, but also we'll be getting into, um, some costs for design and engineering for the wa, wastewater treatment plant project. Again, a project where we've identified in strategic plan, but also ongoing equipment and tools for the water and sewer utility. Well number six in the water utility will also be a big expense and project for next year. And then, uh, well number three rehab is another project that we've talked about previously, so, uh, pretty busy year. Eight point five mil, or fourteen million overall for, for projects, that's, that's starting to kinda track recent years, but it's a lot higher than maybe five, ten years ago, um, but that's because we're doing a lot of stuff, we're doing a lot of projects. So if there's any questions or feedback, be happy to have it.
I just have a question about the squad camera change, um, so I see that the squad cameras are eleven every year, starting, it originally started in twenty-twenty-six, can you tell me what that mean, are we delaying? What does that mean, that we're now taking that out of twenty-twenty-six?
Yeah, we're, um, just delaying it slightly, just because it has such an impact.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just, uh, kind of a thought for going forward on this capital improvement plan, because this really does lay out the priorities of the village for the next ten years, and that, I guess I would be inclined to, as we go forward with this process, possibly refer this to both the D E I committee and the, uh, newly established Sustainability Committee to see what their thoughts are, and to get more input on what, where our priorities, I mean, we've laid out to Martin what our priorities are for the next two years, but looking long-term, I think it's important to get both those committees involved as, as far as determining what projects or equipment should go forward, and what ones maybe can hit the back burner. And we all have our thoughts, but we have those committees for a reason, and I think this is a good way to get them involved.
Okay, anything else? Amanda?
Uh, I was just gonna say that, you know, it's important to realize that, I mean, it's all fine and well to have a plan, but, you know, things can be added as we go along. I mean, one of the things that's, we'll be talking about later, that it was in, uh, Martin's report, is the considering putting solar panels on the roof of the village hall, and, you know, we don't, we have no idea how much that would cost right now, but if that's something we decide to do, that would be part of our capital improvement plan, and so, you know, there are gonna be tweaks as you go along, it's not written in stone, but this is, this is a plan that we're making for ten years.
Uh, Carleen?
I don't, I don't disagree with either of you, um, and I just wanna add the comment that one of the ways I think that we can be more proactive on the front end, especially where D E I sort of concerns are, is to have more diverse committees, uh, that are presenting, and, you know, just more diversity period within our committees and our staff, to be looking at these things and thinking through that lens, because, once again, this is kinda sending it over there to the D E I committee to say, do these things match? And it's, I mean, like, we have an agenda already that we're working on and looking at, at ordinances and policies, and so you see what I'm saying, I mean, it, it, um, it needs to be wrapped up in how we, how we determine these things initially, not once they're done, send it over there to say, do, does this match? So I hear what you're saying, and I think it's, I think it's well-placed, um, and, um, it's kinda after the fact at this point, so I think that it's, it's the kinda thing, as Amanda was saying, that as we go along, we tweak, but right now, we're literally looking at the, the Village of Oregon ordinances and the Oregon Police Department policies, and we prioritize those around things. And this is enormous, you know? So, I, I just think that, and, and I said it when we were talking about strategic planning, as we do these things, the lens needs to be something that we're all conscious about. Not something that we send over to the committee to have the committee determine.
Derek?
I agree, and my, my, my thoughts on turning this over to committee are less for this year than going forward in future years, it's more long-term. I would like to see those committees involved with it, long-term, not just, not just for now.
I totally agree, and I think that as, as things play out, there will be things to say about.
Really, this, this C I P just kinda lays out the framework for next year and the following year, so, I mean, if we can make those little tweaks at the committee level year on year on year, then I think that we're coming out ahead.
Heard.
Anybody else? I would just mention, uh, I just dropped in on Lauren today unannounced, and she was gracious enough to answer some questions, which I try not to do, but one of the, if not the biggest, biggest, uh, dollar amount in here is the sewer and, and expansion, and, and twenty-six million dollars, and, uh, and, and she, Lauren certainly answered my questions, but reassured me that substantial information will be coming our way as we go through that process, and, uh, lots of time to evaluate exactly what we're doing, so, I just, thanks Lauren again. If it'd be me, and anybody else on the, uh, capital improvement plan?
Thanks for all the work.
Yes. Item E, uh, eighty, review initial goals and objectives draft from Village Board strategic planning meeting, now, it's Martin again.
Yeah, I can take that, so, a couple weeks ago, we, we of course met to talk strategic planning, and, uh, the task for me out of that was to, uh, synthesize the discussion, the key takeaways and the goals and objectives that were discussed, uh, and I've attempted to do that here in this item. Uh, and in the packet, there is the, I guess, sort of a draft list of goals and objectives, either carrying forward what, uh, what wasn't accomplished and was discussed, uh, in the previous plan, uh, items that were in the, the presentation that went up on the screen at that meeting, and then, uh, trying to capture everything that, that the board talked about. I talk about it in my memo here, if you had a chance to read it, but there was two, two areas that seemed like, um, kinda need to be a little bit more fleshed out, and, uh, I think we've, we've attempted to do that here. Elise and I had met and talked about, uh, housing in particular, uh, 'cause that was a topic that was discussed at length at that meeting. And what we sort of settled on here was a couple of items, uh, that, um, reduced barriers, I guess we would call it, and make things more flexible, um, to advance, um, affordable and, and, uh, senior housing, and just overall create an environment that's more conducive to, to housing development in general. Uh, and so we included here, making sure that we get the comprehensive plan done this year, uh, which is, is on, which is in, happening, and will be on track to do, uh, but that will be a pretty significant, uh, policy change, at least as it's drafted right now for the village. Uh, it was actually in the packet for the Plan Commission at their last meeting on Thursday. Um, but that will shift, uh, development policy for the village, if it stays the way it's written, away from sort of traditional, single-family housing developments towards more dense, uh, more mixed-use, uh, developments. The, another thing that we sort of talked about at the strategic planning meeting, and Elise and I talked about a little bit more at length, was making sure that we update, modernize the village's zoning and land development applications. I think that will go a long way in helping people understand the process in full, and, and just for making it easier for people to approach the village from a development perspective. The other thing that we talked about, and I included in the packet here, was this list of short, mid, and long-range zoning text amendments. Uh, that came before the board, I think probably at the end of last year, or maybe the beginning of this year. But Elise had put together, uh, a list of changes that could be made to the zoning code that were based on recommendations from our Housing Affordability Report, which we have to do every year, and then, um, uh, some of the things that we've, we're anticipating that are going to be coming out of the comprehensive plan update. Um, so things like, uh, some things are, are just sort of low-hanging fruit, things that have been, uh, brought up a number of times that just need to be addressed or haven't been addressed yet. There's also some things in our zoning code that need to be updated based on changes to state law, but then there's some, also some changes that, uh, could be made to reflect, uh, some of the things that we're anticipating coming out of the comprehensive plan, so, again, making things more flexible in terms of mixed-use zoning districts, um, allowing for more dense developments in, in more zoning districts. Uh, and so I included that list there, um, if you want to take a look at that. But again, ultimately, it's, the changes are to create more flexibility, reduce barriers for housing development. The other thing that we talked about was, there also was several housing bills that were passed at the state level this, uh, past couple of months, and they are creating a few new housing grant programs for affordable housing, senior housing, and commercial conversion housing. So those are gonna be new programs that will provide grants to developers and property owners. We don't know all the details of all those grant programs yet, they just got passed into law, and now, uh, W I D A needs to actually develop the rules and, and actual programs themselves. So we wanna make sure that we keep an eye on that, um, so that, uh, a housing developer or a property owner can take advantage of that program, uh, those programs when they become available. And some of those programs are going to be tied to exactly what we're talking about here, which is making changes to your zoning code and your comprehensive plan that reduce barriers to housing development, and making things more flexible within your, within your code, so the ultimate intent is, we need housing, and we need to figure out ways to get it to happen more quickly. Um, so those are things, that's something we put in the, the list here for the strategic plan, is to make sure we evaluate those, and if we need to do anything to position ourselves to take advantage of them, then that's something that we should, we should consider. For sustainability, we talked about that quite a bit too, we had just, uh, adopted the sustainability plan, of course. Myself, Jeff, and Elise sat down and went through that plan. There's quite a few things that came out of the discussion that are consistent with that plan, but we also identified a couple other things that we think would be good to include, uh, as priorities in this plan. And you can see that list right there, uh, obviously, the comp plan, the bike and ped path study we talked about is, is in the sustainability plan, major wastewater treatment plan upgrade, especially as it's tied to, um, specifically disinfection, which is mentioned within the sustainability plan, we don't currently do that for our effluent water, and, and we will do so presumably once this project is done. Uh, complete water system master plan, complete the rotary bike trail repairs, uh, couple projects that, uh, Jeff talked about, Jeff and I talked about when we went over the sustainability plan, that he'd like to prioritize, uh, replacing the village-owned downtown streetlights with LEDs. Those are the only streetlights that we actually own. Uh, authorize the village's SCADA, uh, contractor conduct comprehensive review of the system's programming, implement efficiency measures, so that's the program that, um, oversees our water and sewer utility systems. Uh, complete the stormwater quality plan, I just mentioned that in our C I P discussion. Uh, having all employees engage, that engage in snow and ice control activities, achieve the Saltwise Winter Salt Certification. Uh, examine the feasibility of solar installation on Village Hall, extend the duration of the Ad Hoc Public Transportation Committee, we just did that, so it can complete its work. And then, uh, we'd also like to update the T I F policy to incorporate more language about incentivizing sustainability. We have some of those things already in our T I F policy, but the sustainability plan does a good job of kind of expanding on what that could potentially mean, uh, so we could be a little bit more detailed in our policy about, uh, what are some things that we really would like to target, and so developers would be, uh, would know upfront that they could target those things. Couple other things I just wanna mention too, uh, Elise and I talked about the southeast expansion area, that was a good topic of discussion we had at the strategic plan meeting. What we'd like to do is, most likely at the next meeting, actually have a closed session with the Village Board, talk about maybe some negotiation strategy. What we'd like to do is, most likely at the next meeting, actually have a closed session with the village board, talk about maybe some negotiation strategy, and other things related to that, in terms of how we want to be prioritizing some of those things. We were able to meet with a, a couple of people, gave us some really good advice, um, some good ideas on how to approach that. But not just that area, but also just all, all of our sort of commercial expansion areas. Um, so I kind of have a little bit of a nebulous statement in that list I have there on, on that topic, but, um, we can talk more about that in the next couple of meetings. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention, too, was, it, it didn't come up too much, but, um, intergovernmental relations. There is a, as part of the state shared revenue law, there was a new, uh, innovation grant fund set up, uh, as part of that law. And again, like the housing programs, they're not, they haven't been set up completely. The, the agency now has to develop the program and write the rules on it, but, the intent is for local governments to potentially receive some grant funding for, uh, shared or consolidated services. Um, so we're very interested to see what that looks like, and if that pushes communities to, uh, work together on certain services, um, what kind of grants could be received from that. So I think that's a good thing to, to prioritize in this plan and, and to examine and see if there's ways that we can take advantage of it. So I guess, I guess I had, I had my list, draft list in there. I guess any questions or feedback, and if I missed something, or something needs to be rewritten, or changed, or taken out. Want to get that feedback, and then we'll, we'll go back and make a nice, nice-looking, enriching, full document.
Thank you, Martin. Question of Car- Carleen?
So, thank you. That was a really thorough overview. I just want to add something to the part that you skipped over, the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece. I had a discussion with, actually had discussion with more than one person who seems to think that the Black History for a New Day course is the sum total of the training that we're going to do on diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is not. It is a course that is part of what, of the contract that we have with Nehemiah, um, urban, urban development, or Center for Urban Development, or urban, urban leadership development. Nehemiah. Anyway, um, they have recently, um, village staff and committee members have recently completed a survey. Uh, we had really excellent response to that survey. And based on that survey, the assessment that is referred to here in the diversity, equity, and inclusion portion, they are developing a nine-module training for, um, village staff, department, department heads, trustees, and committee members of a cohort of about twenty people. So that will be ongoing on a monthly basis, so I would like to, um, suggest a sentence to be added.
Yeah, and I tried to capture that in the list.
Yeah, I looked in both places, and it's not there, so I just thought I could just add this. Uh, engage village staff, trustees, and committee members in diversity, equity, and inclusion training through Nehemiah Center for Urban Leadership Development. And I think that, that's probably enough. I mean, we don't have to go into all that detail I just gave, but it's, and it's based on the ser- the survey results from.
Can you read it one more time for us?
I'll just give it to you. I wrote it down.
I think I got it, but.
Yeah, I'll just hand it to you. So, yeah, that was, that was my only edit.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other comments? Lynn?
I just have two very small, um, tweaks or ideas for tweaks, and, um, I don't know if this is the place to do that, but, uh, Public Works has most of those sustainability goals, um, which obviously makes sense. But I do wonder if we could just add sustainability to the title of that as well, just so that it doesn't fall simply to the Public Works Department to make us sustainable, and, um, to sort of help the public see some of the sustainability actions. And then my second is a question. On the last strategic plan, there were timelines. Will that be on this plan as well, or did that seem to not be as needed?
No, I think I'll, I'll probably add timelines in, and if that's desired, then for sure I will add it in. But that was my intent, yeah.
Great. I, yeah, my point, my opinion would be to add it, because it'd be nice to see or speak to people about when we expect to have some of these goals accomplished.
Yep.
Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Martin. Item nine, new business signs for discussion or possible action. A letter of agreement to receive on-call communications and public information services between the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, Mule Communications LLC, and the Village of Oregon. Recommendations to motion to approve as presented. This was in the packet. Did, uh, any questions or otherwise I'd look for a motion? Uh, Lynn? And, uh, Carleen? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine B, letter of agreement between the Village of Oregon, Mule Communications LLC, to provide communication strategy in crisis communications on an as-needed basis. Again, a memo in the packet. Looking for a motion to approve. Amanda? And Lynn? Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item nine C, review employee compensation plan proposal for placement in the draft 2024 budget.
All right, I will go again. So if you were on the board, uh, last year, remember, we went through the process of creating a new employee compensation plan, which was part of the current, uh, village board strategic plan. Uh, and we retained a Carlson Detman, a consultant, to help us go through that study and create a new plan, which was adopted at the end of last year. And I had in the packet just some background about, um, how that all kind of came together and how that plan works. But for tonight's purposes, um, I'm putting forward a proposal for the 2024 budget to, uh, further implement the adopted plan, and, uh, want to get the board's feedback and blessing to, to build the budget around that. So if you, if you were on last year, remember, uh, the plan, uh, in order to fully implement it would have required, uh, over a, a million-dollar, uh, proposition to get everybody to basically where, every employee where they needed to be, um, based on the, the plan and the related policy. Uh, and obviously, that wasn't feasible, uh, but we did end up taking off a, a pretty big chunk of that, um, uh, about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar chunk of it, actually. Uh, so that got us, uh, pretty far along, uh, in, in implementing it and having the, the plan actually reflect where people are, uh, on the scales. So everybody got on the scale last year, and so this year, what I'm proposing to do is we kind of continue along on that journey, um, in getting people to where they need to be based on steps and years of service. And so this year, uh, I'm proposing that we, uh, continue to expand the recognition of longevity, which is what the, the scales are based upon. Uh, last year, we implemented the plan with, uh, if you had five years of experience with the village, you got placed at step three. And so that helped get people pushed onto, or placed onto the actual schedule for the, for the new, uh, plan. And so this year, I'm proposing that, uh, everybody with, uh, four years of employment be placed at a, a minimum step five, so that will keep pushing people up the scale to the steps that correspond with their years of experience with the village. The other thing, that I, the other criteria that I'm proposing is that there's a minimum percentage increase for all staff. We, we did this last year as well. And so for this year, making sure that if you aren't, uh, uh, aren't captured by that first criteria of longevity recognition, that you at least still get a, a minimum four percent increase. Inflation appears to be, consumer price indexes, inflationary factors, whichever one you want to consider, still seems to be running, you know, anywhere from five to six percent. Uh, and so between these two criteria, that will push people, most people, um, actually up to or up between five and six percent. There's a handful of employees who missed the cutoff last year for, uh, years of service, probably anywhere between five and ten individuals, who will most likely see around a ten percent increase, just because they just missed it last year, and now they're getting pulled up a little bit further with this criteria. And then the other piece of this, uh, is to, is something that we talked about last year, uh, during the, the study, is, uh, decompression of police management staff. So what happens particularly on the police side of things, because oftentimes you have a police union, which has one kind of pay philosophy within their union contract, and then you have police management employees who are non-union, who fall within this pay philosophy. They don't always match up very well, and what happens sometimes over time in, in many communities is, officers start to actually make more than their, their direct supervisors, uh, especially when accounting for overtime. Of course, that creates a lot of issues with motivation and employee morality, because why would you want to take on more, more responsibility when you won't even make more money? Um, and so it happens pretty commonly, and so I'm proposing, uh, in, to advance the, the plan even further, get people further along, um, further decompressing those police management staff, uh, so we can continue to avoid that pay compression that is happening with, with officers and police management. Uh, and you can see in my recommendation, uh, the movement of some of those positions from, uh, one grade to another to, to achieve that. So, uh, for tonight, I guess I'm looking for, if there's any questions or feedback, I think this, going this way, as far as having something to base the draft budgets around is helpful, uh, in advance. I think it makes it a lot easier to, to, uh, build the budget as staff. But it also avoids, I think, what was sort of happening in the past, which was, um, we would put the bu- budget together, and then we would just see what's left. And that's what we would give staff, basically. And that's why you ended up with years of one percent, one-point-five, sometimes zero percent increases. And so I think this helps us have a baseline, um, encourages the staff to be creative with their budgets and trying to build around it. And then if, if things don't work, if, if, if we need to pull back in certain areas, we still have every opportunity to do that as we get into the budget process, but it, it creates a nice, full-budget draft that we can provide to the board.
Thank you, Martin. We have a rather lengthy motion, recommended motion to, uh, make here on page three sixty-one. If anyone has it up, up.
Oh.
Amanda?
Yeah, so, um, uh, my, my motion is to direct staff to set employee wages in the draft 2024 budget using the following criteria. One, employees who have at least four years of total employment with the village be set at least at step five. Number two, implement further decompression of police department staff by making the following adjustments. Police chief from grade twenty to twenty-one, lieutenant from grade seventeen to eighteen, and sergeant from grade fifteen to sixteen. And three, in all circumstances, employees receive a minimum of a four percent increase and placement at the corresponding step within the employee wage scale.
Okay. For a second, by Carleen? Questions, comments? Uh, Amanda?
I was just going to make a comment that, you know, people talk about assets, and it's not, it's not buildings, it's not a village hall, it's not a library, it's not amenities. All that stuff is great, but our greatest asset is our staff and our employees, and I'm totally on board with this.
Carleen?
Second that hundred percent, and also just really, uh, commend you, Martin, and the folks who worked together to figure out how, how you can decompress wages and also bring people on so that they're at a level, having been a teacher for a long time, and fortunately, I was in a union, but I'm from North Carolina where they incentivized adding teachers or, you know, recruitment of teachers, and they were making, first-year teachers were making more than people who had been teaching for five years, and there was no way that the people who had been teaching were going to catch up. And so, you know, you, you kind of get into this, if, if you lose staff and you need to incentivize people, and we don't want to, we, as Amanda said, we do not want to lose staff. We have really good staff here, and we want to keep people here. And when we are hiring new people, we want to attract people with a comparable wage to what they could make in another municipality or even in the private sector. So thank you for all of that, and I a hundred percent behind this.
Dirk, please.
Echo those two first, but I'd also like to say, uh, I appreciate the thinking by Martin to put this at the forefront of the budget as opposed to the afterthought of the budget. I think that's a really good way to go.
Okay, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Carleen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Nine D, future agenda items. This item gives board members the opportunity to place items and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Any future agenda items? Mary Nutt. Item ten, reports of village officers. A, village administrator report, uh, which was in the packet. Questions, comments?
He's had his three minutes.
Oh, yes, right. Ten B, village department head, staffer, consultant, comments?
I just had one.
Chief, please.
So today we had our, uh, annual K-nine event golf outing. Um, I first want to thank Candy and Lisa for volunteering and coming down and enjoying the beautiful day with us on the golf course.
It's nice.
They, they volunteered their time, uh, on their own and came down and hoped, and we appreciate that, not only because it's very helpful, but because we love working with them. So thank you to both of you. Um, and then a thank you to Lynn. She represented the village board very well with her golfing, um, and, and it was a lot of fun. Yeah, so, uh, we, we had a tremendous amount of support from local businesses, uh, village, county, you name it. A lot of, uh, businesses stepped up and sponsored and offered, uh, raffle prizes and things like that, so it was a lot of fun, um, and thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Other staff, consultants, village department heads? Okay, item ten C, village board comments. Dirk?
Uh, I have a couple of things, though. First off, I just wanted to say thank you to the Nature Alliance for the native pollinator garden that was out there on Saturday. There was a great turnout of volunteers to do that. It was a really good time, so thanks for that. Uh, the second bit that I kind of wanted to address was a email that we received from Jennifer Way this afternoon as the village board and village staff about regarding an unfortunate social media post with some misinformation in it. If anyone from the community wants reliable information on the way village funds are spent or the way that the library project is going, I encourage you to reach out for, to Jennifer for that information. She lays it out beautifully, easy to understand, and I thank you for your email.
Thank you.
Any other village board comments? Carleen?
Uh, two things. There is, um, I just want to really thank staff and committee members for responding to the Nehemiah survey for the DEI assessment for our community. They were really impressed with how many people responded. Turns out there were eight elected officials who responded, because I tested it, and then I didn't realize I'd done it, so I did it twice. I just said, throw the first one away. That was me. So, I appreciate everybody who responded, first of all, and then also encourage, uh, folks that to, um, if you have not taken the Black History for a New Day class, if you're on the board or village staff, there are twelve open spots. We had fifty as part of our contract. We used thirty-eight of them in the spring. Uh, it does start in September, but it will be via Zoom. We'll have two groups that are facilitated by DEI, uh, committee members. And I think everybody who did it last time really felt it was worthwhile, so, uh, there are twelve spots, and four of them are spoken for, so there's eight more. Um, and then, different thing, I have a request. If we could just put onto the, the, uh, agenda just a standing committee reports where we could just not, like, where we could just not, like, anybody who's on a committee could just, they could, we could just have all of them listed. Any that we serve on, and then if there's something, we could say, yeah, this thing, like, like the Black History for a New Day class. Just say it and not have to get it to Candy ahead of time, because quite frankly, I forget. And I'd like to be able to say that in the reports of committees, so that's where that information is. I don't know how any other committee folks feel about that, but.
Yeah, we, we had talked about doing it in the past. I mean, maybe that's a future agenda item, I know we're past that. But could we talk about having just the space? Because if there's nothing to say, we just say, oh, nothing to report. But it's a trigger on there to remind each committee chair to give an update. Because not everybody goes to all the committee meetings, and it's nice to keep tabs on what's happening.
Well, I might suggest the chair would, you know, use his prerogative and say that we'll make it a future agenda item to discuss what you guys have suggested.
Okay, okay, so since I suggested it, and I'm not going to be at the next meeting, can you just assume that I'm for it?
I'd have to look that up.
I authorized Candy to speak for me.
If it's a close vote, we'll take that in consideration. Okay, other village board comments? Lynn?
Well, Chief Pankoff took my comment, but I just wanted to speak to the K9 outing today. There were a lot of people there who were not from our community, and what a great illustration of how great our community is. We had village staff, we had police officers. Everything from the minute you pulled into the parking lot till the afternoon was so well-planned. Everything was ready to go. I was just really impressed, and I am really happy that it's a great view of our community for a lot of people who don't live here. I think it made us look really great, and we are really great. So I thank everybody who participated.
Thank you. Other comments? Hearing none? Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business. A, upcoming meeting and events, there is a report in your packet. Something, nothing to add. Item B, announcement of the 2023 Wed White and Blue Event honoring Oregon-area first responders on August 31, 2023, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and there was a flyer in the packet. Okay. Item 12, Amanda? And Lynn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? We are adjourned, thank you all very much.